Joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work, help us work together, and encourage each other's to excellence. We ask that we would challenge each other to reach higher and farther to be the best that we can be. We ask this in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we've got the minutes of the June 9, 2020 tax budget hearing for 2021, June 9 work session, June 23 regular session, and July 14 work session. Do we have any corrections on any of those? Hearing none, the minutes stand approved. This is a time for citizens to comment on matters before council. When recognized, please come forward to the lectern, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. This is not intended to be a dialogue with council or village staff. If you have questions, the questions will be recorded and referred to the manager's office for response. This will allow time for thoughtful and thorough consideration to be given to each question. Council meetings are recorded for ease of transcripts. Comments are limited to three minutes. Speakers may not yield any or all of their time to other speakers.
Hi, my name's Ken Workman. I live on Dayspring Terrace. The, just to start with, we have got the best police chief in Hamilton County, bar none. No, no motion. But I have a question about the concert situation. As I understand it, we're not allowed to have concerts that Mr. Miller puts on every other day on a weekly basis. Now, seeing as that is true, how come we haven't had a concert out there Friday, Saturday, and Sunday? And I'll tell you what, Dayspring Terrace is pretty far away, ways from the shopping center, and I could hear it very clearly. That's, and it was well after 10 o'clock when I was hearing it. I, I think we could do something to stop that, or at least control it. The decimal level's got to be well above ocean hearing decimals. It's got to be. So, do what you gotta do.
Good evening. I'm Todd Bricker from January, to January 4th, and this is the first regular session I've attended since March because of different situations. But what I'd like to do is recognize people who've served our community, and specifically the loss of the officer, Kaiya Grant, of Springdale Police on March 21st. On March 29th, I stood along Springfield Pike on Sunday morning as Officer Grant's procession came by, hand over my heart, and I was very moved by the sacrifice of people who are paid to serve the public, and the public takes their lives sometimes. But I was very pleased to see that there were other people, other civilians, and there were many vehicles from, from many jurisdictions, Cincinnati area, and many in the southern, southwest Ohio, Indiana, Kentucky, several from Dayton area, several from the Columbus area, some from far away as Louisville and Lexington, Kentucky, and as far away as Toledo and Mansfield, Ohio, and Delaware County Sheriff's car was also among the many others. And I was very pleased that there were two vehicles from the Green Hills Department. And later, I was quite pleased to hear that two of our officers were part of the honor guard, Officers Eric Tricase and Zach Clark. And I appreciate the service of the officers, all the officers who protect us. And I also want to commend the officers, Green Hills officers, who are part of the honor guard. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else? Okay, moving on, reports of village officials, the municipal manager, Yvonne Kovak.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a number of things to go through tonight. First is that I put all of these documents in front of you. We had a planning commission meeting. The public hearing was on July 7, and at that time, Planning Commission did make a motion to move the amendments forward to the village council for review and consideration. I will just say, this process has been a lot longer than we anticipated because of COVID. We originally had a meeting back in early March that was to be followed up with the first public hearing in April. We were unable to do that until that July 7 date. But nonetheless, we're moving forward again. So because of that, our auditorium was extended, you guys extended that, until I believe it's the end of Mar, end of October. So your next step will be to set a public hearing date. If you're interested, we could do it at the next council meeting, August 25th, if that works. I would suggest work session, but that's not quick enough to get the notice into the paper, you know, to give us our advertisement requirement. So if August 25th would work, we could go with that. I'll leave that up to you. I also wanted to point out, there's one item that Planning Commission did add into this regarding what we'll refer to as entertainment venues, that will identify as conditional uses and add some special language granting either a conditional use if the business intends to have entertainment on a regular basis, or again, an opportunity to do a special temporary permit. And Planning Commission liked the idea that, of limiting the number of special permits to maybe four a year or something like that, where we are talking about outdoor concerts. So just wanted to make you aware of that change, and then later on, I guess, let me know what date works good for the public hearing. The next item that I want to bring to your attention is just in general liquor licenses. Is this something we don't usually talk about? But I felt it was appropriate to raise it now and possibly discuss it at a work session or in a committee. We have a new tenant at the shopping center who has entered into their lease, first base, a ten-year lease. They'll be filing with the Liquor Control Board to transfer a liquor license to our community. And it's my understanding, as always, you'll be asked to weigh in on that decision. So I just thought it'd be helpful for you to see where we are right now on our licenses, which is this sheet with the, it's like, doesn't really have the heading on it, other than a lot of strange numbers, the, like the C1, C2, all of those. If you look, you see them at the top. If you look down below, that tells you what kind of liquor license that is. So different establishments have different kinds of licenses. They base a lot of, well, they base what, oh, and jump in anytime I jump on this, like, I guess they like a lot based on population. Like, and some of them, you'll see where it says 1,000 or 2,000, then it'd be like one for every 1,000 or one for every 2,000. And it does seem to vary by, by the type, you know, is it beers, wine, or is it liquor? So in the first permit quota is the number that they indicate we can have, maybe in the Liquor Control Board. Permits issued are the ones that have been issued in comparison to that quota. There's only two categories right now, the D1 and the D2. That's why I highlighted those for you. We have added one transfer in both of those categories. So we now, our quota's two on each of those, but we, we actually have three right now. All the other ones were, you know, only half, halfway there. D3A, I'm not sure what that one was. Oh, that's extending it to 2:30 in the morning. So anyway, I just thought it'd be valuable for you to see that, and maybe the work session or the committee will talk about this a little bit more.
Is there, is there any way to get a percentage, where we currently stand percentage-wise compared to other communities?
Yeah, I guess we could.
I'd just like to, I mean, if, just to see what the overall trends are and get an idea of if we're, how saturated we are for our population.
Okay.
Mr. Haller, I think I could answer that to some degree. Typically, most communities are at their max. In, in most communities, the only way to get a liquor permit is to buy one and import it in, which has happened twice here, and probably will happen with this other business that is contemplating that. But most communities are right at 100%. There's usually not enough to go around, and they're, they're pretty much a hot commodity, which is why buyer can, pretty, it's a buyer's market for them.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is, we have a second draft on, this is the facility rental issue that we discussed at work session. So tonight, we have for you a second draft incorporating in yellow, I incorporated the item that council members requested be included. So you can take a look at that. I have also attached, at the end of that, our current fee schedule. We talked, we had discussed the possibility of the issue of residents versus non-residents being able to utilize our facilities, and then talked about, you know, make the difference being what they pay, which we currently do, but you might want to make changes to that, which is the reason why I went ahead and attached that fee schedule, so you'd have that, and is to, if you want to discuss it in further work, discuss it further at a future work session, we could do that. But I highlighted the resident and non-resident rates for you to take a look at. So be sure I incorporated everything. If there's additional things, I guess we can discuss it further. And then, the last item I gave you was a schedule for the end of the season pool hours. If you remember, last year, we incorporated a few hours during the week. Instead, this year, what we're doing is staying open an additional week through August 23rd, and then we start, we'll have two weekends where it will be weekends only. So I gave you those dates and the hours. The last day, Labor Day, will be noon until 6 o'clock. So, you know, as I've said before, and as you know, it's, it's been a rough year at the swimming pool. I, I think the majority of people are definitely grateful that we, we at SwimSafe went to the effort to make it available to the public. It has not been easy. Hopefully, this will be beyond us, behind us next year, where we may want to take it on the path. So one more item I want to throw out. I know a number of you have taken your Sunshine Law. I know our new clerk has taken it, the training. Would council, I want to do it because I like to do it every so often. So if anybody in a view, whether or not you're going to take it right now, if you want to like be covered, is, they have to do like by motion or something to?
Yeah, they, they could do a motion to designate you as their designee.
Okay, so if you're interested in doing that?
If anyone is interested.
Yes, please.
Okay, we've got a taker.
Second.
Third.
I think I actually have to identify.
You can take it online now.
I'm registered for October in Middletown, but I don't know if that will happen around. If you have an online link, I'd be willing to do that. I just don't want to go anywhere.
Oh, yeah, I can send it to you. It's really easy to find.
Okay. And then, once you get the certificate forwarded to you.
Yes.
To have on file.
Okay, so at least three right now? You interested in?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Any other takers?
Yvonne, if I could have the online link, I'll try to take it before you go, but if I don't.
When are you going?
I'm, I'm gonna do, I'll be doing it online for everybody, and then I'll train you.
Okay, because I'll do it online.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's my understanding they give you like 24 hours, even though it's a three-hour course, so I don't know that.
Stuff happens throughout the day.
Okay, so at some point, do a motion for that.
Yeah, let me know, because I'm registered for Middletown in October.
Okay.
Because I couldn't take the one that was in Sharonville, it was already full. But if you're going to be doing that.
And actually, they changed the Sharonville one to a webcast now, so they probably, but that's all right. I, I got you on the list of you covered either way.
If you're back, if you are, that would appreciate it.
Online is fine.
Okay, anything else?
I'm busy for now.
Great. Moving on, law director, Jeff Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I don't have a microphone, so I can't give it.
Oh.
There you go.
No report.
Okay, clerk of council, Tanya Kohler.
No report.
Chief of police, Neil Furtman.
That got here fast. We had a bittersweet event this month. Our longest-serving member, or at least the longest-serving member in law enforcement, Bob Wright, is in the process of leaving us and retiring. His wife has been in some ill health, and he has decided to stay home and care for her. And it's truly a loss. Bob's been in law enforcement for 52 years. He served most of his career as a detective in Forest Park, and after his retirement in that capacity, served in an onsworn capacity there as their property technician, as well as ours, since 1993. So he certainly knows the ropes, and we were very fortunate to obtain the services of Rob Payne, who was the longtime lead property manager in the Hamilton, Ohio Police Department. I may have worked with him for a year or two. And actually, our finance director was the one who audited him every year to make sure everything was, was straight. So she, he comes with her recommendations as well. So we are very fortunate to manage to acquire a Kalia-trained, accredited property officer who is, ran a very, very busy property room that was about the size of this entire building. So we're, we're very fortunate to have him. We're also fortunate to have our residents here in Green Hills who never fail to surprise me. We started getting calls a couple of weeks ago about the "Thank You, Green Hills Police Department" signs that were popping up all over town. And normally, we're on top of these things, but we didn't know where they came from. So we do know how to investigate, and we found out who was responsible for those. And we're very grateful for those that have banded together to purchase those signs and put them up. And I did find out who was responsible and sent along a thank you note. And we can pass along the information on how to contact that gentleman and his wife if anyone wants to call us at our main number, which is 513-825-2101. On a sadder note, earlier this month, we were ordered into a period of mourning. We had an Ohio police officer in Toledo, Anthony Dia, who was shot after responding to a call in the early morning hours to investigate an intoxicated man. As he was checking to make sure that the person was okay, the man fired one round into the officer's chest. It went in at an angle where the bulletproof vest did not protect his chest area. The suspect ran and subsequently killed himself after fleeing into the nearby woods. There's a picture on our website of the young officer with two young children that it leaves behind and a wife. So that was a sad occasion to commemorate. On a better note, we were able to commend one of our officers for some cool-headed coordination and action. He had responded on July 14 through our B section to investigate the location of a critically missing person from Corraying Township. We'd received information that this person was suicidal and found out that he was under the influence of drugs. Apparently, been using cocaine for about four days. He discovered, the, the person discovered the officer was there, and he made some threats. The officer called for backup. One of the backups that came was a K-9 unit from Springfield Township that I'm sure helped his decision to come out of the crawl space that he was in before the K-9 was let loose. He did surrender peacefully, and we took him down to the psychiatric unit at University Cincinnati for care. And he also had several warrants on him for, in other jurisdictions. And Officer Rob Lenhoff was the officer. He was up here before you when he received a life-saving award not too many months ago. In his commendation, it was easy to commend him. We put that this was a very difficult call, and a myriad of things could have gone wrong resulting in injuries to both persons and officers. You used excellent organizational skills by requesting assistance, establishing a perimeter, coordinating communications, and using a disciplined entry into the residence. You are commended for your exemplary efforts because of your actions. A potentially dangerous incident was resolved peacefully. This was an excellent job. Please keep up the good work. On a more mundane note, we updated and issued 28 new general orders on July 15. There are constantly changes to laws, court cases, and other things that occur that cause us to constantly update our policies. I'm pleased to report to you that we're a little bit ahead of the curve on some agencies that are just now changing their use of force policies for a duty to intercede or for a prohibition on chokeholds, and those have all been contained in our policies. We are due for yet another inspection by Kalia, which is the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, and that will occur towards the end of this year. Continuing on with the boring stuff, we got a new computer system, which we're all pretty excited about. Our PayMet system was acquired in 2011. If you've read the newspapers, you know that company has experienced some huge problems with data loss. We were able to get a backup and recover that. And then, in addition to that, last year, we even put that software on our own server so we could back it up ourselves. However, they have announced that they were going to discontinue support of the product at the end of next year. So we looked at several different systems. We implemented a, a new system called Peel 9, which is based on those of you who know your law enforcement history, Sir Robert Peel, who was the father of modern policing. You may recall that officers are called Bobby's in London. That's where Bobby Peel started the London Metropolitan Police, and that's why they're called that. But the system is much more comprehensive and more of an analytical tool than what we had before. In fact, many officers are following behind us. Glendale is going that way. Woodlawn is. St. Bernard was just in our building today. I was telling the manager to take a look at it. So Blue Ash, I know is another one, Marie Mont, and Madeira, and several others. So hopefully, we'll have all this in place, and we're still learning, but we, we certainly enjoy working with the software. You may have seen that we were featured on the news recently. Channel 5 did an investigative report called Inside Your Police Force. They took a look at use of force policies. They took a look at training. We talked about recent implicit bias training that we just did. We actually did a training dedicated on the mistakes made in Minnesota. So they, they did a very favorable story on the department. They said, actually, in our ongoing investigation, we highlight some of the departments that have taken it a step further. The Green Hills Police Department prioritizes training exercises. Officers complete de-escalation and implicit bias training annually in addition to other training. And we do have a link to that news story on our website. As we all know, the coronavirus just won't go away. We continue to operate with restrictions. We continue to take our temperatures on a daily basis. At least I know what my temperature is every day. It's kind of nice to have that information, I guess, but as you know, it's caused a lot of cancellations in our activities that we enjoy throughout the community. One activity that will go forward, at least in a drive-through capacity, is a backpack giveaway for all students who attend our local school district. That's going to be on Saturday, August 1, from 11:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m., or while supplies last. So if you're interested in that, we'd recommend that you get there early. Children must be present when mom and dad, or mom or dad, go through. It's a terrific opportunity to get a backpack at no cost. That's at the Dayspring Church, right up the road at 1060 Smiley Avenue, right off on the right, off of Wenton Road before the expressway. The good news story of the month was community policing now includes light bulb changing. Who knew? But we got a call on June 27. There was a neighbor in the J section, they called us, concerning the well-being of an elderly female neighbor. Caller stated the porch light had been flickering for several hours, and they'd never seen it flicker before. They also relayed they hadn't seen the elderly resident or any activity at her residence for a while. So Officers Tricase and Phil Means made contact with the resident. Turned out she was okay, but she didn't know how to fix her light bulb, so two officers together, if you want to know how many officers it takes to change the light bulb, you now know it's two. But they checked the porch light, they changed the light bulb for her, and all is now well. During the month of June, we investigated 10 accidents, five crimes, 323 other incidents. We had 760 contact with our citizens. We provided assistance to the public in 114 instances, and we assisted other agencies 64 times. We made nine criminal arrests, which because of the pandemic is down from 23 the same time last year, seven traffic arrests. And that, Mr. Mayor, concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any comments or questions of the Chief? Covered it all. Okay, my report, I have court receipts for the month of June. The checks to be issued to the state of Ohio, $1,191. Hamilton County, $36. And the Village of Green Hills, $5,093.25. And also, I have nothing else to report, other than I'll mention, if somebody wants, wonders what my mask means, no admissions. It's because my car is an electric car, and so they're advertising no admissions. So that's why, that's why I have that.
We, we had some other.
You had some, I know. But I thought I probably needed to clarify this. Okay, committee reports. Recreation cable TV, Natasha Metz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Most people received the email for the village update, letting you know that the in-person events for the year have been canceled. That includes Community Day at the pool, the Harvest Fest, Light Up Green Hills, anything village-sponsored. And we are working on ways to make up for that. At the moment, we don't really have any solid plans, but there are many ideas in anything from pumpkin painting contests to maybe a virtual some aspect. We aren't sure at the moment what all that would be, but we're working on something for the residents to still be able to provide some recreational fun to everybody. And if you're wondering what my mask means, I just like flowers, so. Thank you.
Okay. All right, intergovernmental affairs, laws and rules, Maria Walther.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have the meeting in June, and the next one is August 25. And the report was given in June when we had the meeting. At this point, I have nothing to report.
Okay, all right, thank you. Next, service and streets, Jennifer Osman, Manigaloo.
I don't have anything to report. However, I would like to say that I'm excited about the progress of Wenton Road, the construction. And every time I drive by it, I'm looking at that median and excited to see what's going to happen with that. Thank you.
Yep, and I'm glad somebody hasn't gone up the wrong way and dropped into that big hole there.
I actually saw somebody doing that.
Oh, no.
They had to back out.
Was there any update on the sidewalks, or is that still kind of in the process?
What's that? I'm sorry.
Oh, about the sidewalk.
We were waiting till, what, end of August, I think, early September, before we'd make a call on if we can afford that or not? Okay.
Because they divided up the five phases, and so the first one was the least expensive, so it was budgetary concern, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Finance, Jack Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have, you've all received a copy of the finance director's report on July 9 for the month ending June 30, representing the first half of our fiscal year. A copy of the summary is at your desk tonight for December. A copy of the summary is at your desk tonight for discussion. Looking back at the April results, which are, which at the time was still registering income from the previous months, our general fund recap was showing, still showing some positive revenue numbers. The month of May, however, was when the financial reality of the virus outbreak began to really show stress in the general fund. And with the general fund income tax revenue making a one-to, a one-month-to-month loss of just over $124,000. Given recent previous monthly income tax revenue, that's like losing a full month of income tax. While we continue to incur a reduction in budgeted overall general fund income for 2020, there's no escaping it. For the month of June, we at least held the same percentage of loss, just at a larger number, roughly 14% loss going in from May to June. So still not good, but at least no worse of a decrease. We are still maintaining less than appropriated expenses year-to-year comparison. And again, we were fortunate to have accelerated planned general fund transfers in January when we had carryover funds from 2019 to do so, rather than wait further into 2020 fiscal year. The income tax extension through July 15th has expired, so we should see a clearer picture of where revenues truly are, as well as hopefully citizens who have been furloughed, reduced hours, or laid off entirely returning to work. And should see those in the reports for the months of July and August. And Deb, do you have anything you need to add?
I don't have anything else to add to that.
And I said everything correctly to the best of your ability. Thank you.
All right, moving on, Community Development, Jeff Holter.
Yes, a couple things. One is, I went ahead and peeled up the remaining stickers for the walking paths, and I wasn't sure how many were left. I knew that several of them were faded to white, so I figured that might be the case. And actually, through the entire system, and I forget what we had originally, it could have been 30, 40 stickers, there was probably about six. So either the adhesive had let up, or some residents said, I don't want a sticker on my sidewalk. But we're looking at possibly doing a virtual walking path. You can still get a map of the village and walk these routes. They're quite obvious here. The stickers didn't hurt, but I'm not sure they helped all that much. So we'll be relooking at what we're going to do with that. We had a community development meeting today, and something that I've wanted to do for quite a while is put together a mission statement for our committee, and that's been approved. I'd like to read that. "The community development committee exists for the purpose of improving the quality of life for the mutual benefit of our residents, our neighbors, and businesses. We seek to optimal, we seek optimal solutions to the challenges that face our community. We conduct business in an honest, open, and effective manner. We enjoy serving our community with the utmost professionalism and integrity." And so I invite you to measure us against that, and that's our compass. And I just hope we keep building a really sound and very effective community for everybody involved. So that concludes my report.
Good, thank you. All right, Safety, Melanie Hermes.
I do not have a report as we met in June, and we'll meet again on August, on August 25th. I believe our committee meeting's at 5:30, followed by the Laws and Rules Committee after the Safety Committee prior to the council meeting. Thank you.
Okay. We have no unfinished business. New business ordinance number 2020-01-LNR, adopting Chapter 705 of Village of Green Hills' codified ordinances regarding business licensing. Mr. Walther.
Ordinance number 2020-01-LNR, adopt the Chapter 705 of the Village of Green Hills' codified ordinances regarding business licensing. Whereas council for the Village of Green Hills has determined it is in the best interest of the village to implement certain business licensing regulations, and whereas it is a desire of council to adopt such a solution, regulations. Now, therefore, being ordained by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring, Section 1, that Chapter 705 of the Village of Green Hills' codified ordinances is hereby adopted as set forth in Exhibit A, attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference. Section 2, that all other provisions of the Village of Green Hills' codified ordinances shall remain in full force and effect. And Section 3, that this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law. And Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt this ordinance.
Second. It's been moved in second?
And I would like, I would like, at this point.
Can I may in around for a second?
Yes.
This is the one, I was hoping you could suspend the rules from having to read twice. Can you give me that language for that? So it is an ordinance, so you typically would have to read it twice, but you can suspend the rules to read it twice.
And it would go into effect in 30 days.
Yeah. And it would go into effect in 30 days.
Okay, so I will move that we, to suspend the order of having this read twice at two separate occasions, and to be adopted as the earliest convenience. And also, I have made the comments that I would like to have the village manager to go to a certain numbers of that 705 to highlight it.
Okay, we'll do that after we pass it. Okay, we have a motion?
I second the motion to suspend the rules of reading it on two separate occasions.
Okay.
And we have to vote on that.
Right. Clerk call the roll.
Lee?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Good.
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Osmond?
Aye.
Holter?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right. Any discussion? Or do we need, you would need the other motion?
A motion to adopt.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt this ordinance number 2020-01-LNR.
Second.
Clerk call the roll. Oh, we don't need that?
Well, you will.
Discussion, discussion.
Discussion.
Oh, oh, that's right, yes. Any discussion?
We haven't had an ordinance for a while. Okay, ready? We did talk about reviewing some of the measures so everybody understands what's going on.
Yeah, specifically, I wanted a clarification so everybody understood or had any questions about it was on the 705.03 registration, the Part D. I wanted to make that perfectly clear, so there will be no people that, no one in the village that wonder how that happened and if this includes them or not.
Right. And specifically that it states that it does not include home occupations.
All right, so the occupations that they have and they do whatever they do at home, even though the money has been exchanged, it's not included in this whole chapter.
If it's legal.
I'm sorry?
If it's legal.
Yes, yes. So it excludes the working from home.
Yes.
And it's, and it's limited to what is called the village center, correct?
But our businesses, we have just a couple of them outside the village center, so it's basically the village center.
Okay.
Okay. Let's see, a couple other things. Might be worth mentioning. Again, what it is, each business will have to have a registration with us that's good for one year, from January 1st till December 31st. Renew it each year. It is not transferable between businesses. If one moves in or out, it doesn't matter, they have to get their own. We are asking that it be displayed on the premises. I'll draw your attention to 705.10. If there's any violations of any laws or ordinances pertaining to the business, which could be zoning code, building code, codes of any kind, property maintenance code, it can be revoked. There is an appeal. Then there's also penalty section right at the end there, the 70599. Any business owner or occupant not in compliance with this can face administrative fine up to $100 per day for each day the violation exists. After 10 days, that becomes a minor misdemeanor. In Section B there, any property owner that allows any entity to take possession of any rented lease, ardent, or otherwise conveyed space without receiving a copy of the license will, they will also face a fine of $250 a day for the first offense, $500 thereafter. Any fines not paid in full can be placed on the property tax bill as a lien. It may sound harsh, but as you know, we have extreme problems with people filing for any of their paperwork here, and this is an attempt to get their, get their attention. I know it's all very, the forms are not that complicated. I don't understand why we don't get more compliance, but hopefully this will help us to get there.
They're online?
The forms?
The forms?
The ones that it's already due, either. They're online, they're part of a pack that we can mail out. Anyway, the person needs to get them.
Okay.
Okay, then we, as an additional remedy, council, you council have the opportunity by ordinance if there are violations, too many violations with any one company or business that you can declare them a public nuisance by ordinance. And then a public nuisance, that route would allow us to literally, when the property gets declared a nuisance, they can lose their zoning certificate, we can lock the premises, we can put a sign on it that no one's to enter, those kinds of actions. So we only had to do that once. We had a very severe occasion, you might remember down in the back of the shopping center where it was a pretty dangerous situation, that we had to not let people enter the space. But anyway, hopefully we will not have to use it. We're hoping the business registration, it's easy, hopefully folks will comply. But I wanted to be sure you understood again what we were doing there.
Is there, could you just summarize the purpose of registration for people? You know, it's.
Well, you know, I guess the overall thing is just so we know what business is there, what they're doing, what space they're occupying.
And if they're abiding by the law.
Correct.
Okay.
Ms. Kovak, is a packet with this, with this ordinance handed out to the people, the managing entity or whatever, that are leasing or renting the properties?
Existing ones. This is a new one that you will be adopting.
Well, there will be one, yeah.
Yes, and, but our packets, yes, they are provided to property owners.
Property owners.
We hope when we get to here, you know, our contract with the.
And managers of the major property, though.
Right.
So they would be, it would be understood that they have to pass through here first.
That's right.
Okay, all right.
They should understand that already, but this will be yet another attempt to try to reach them.
To get their attention.
Right.
Okay, clerk call the roll.
Hermes?
Aye.
Metz?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Osmond?
Aye.
Holter?
Aye.
Lee? Aye.
Okay, ordinance number 2020-01-LNR passes. Next, Resolution number 2020-13-F, Resolution Making Supplemental Appropriations and Transfers. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2020-13-F, Resolution Making Supplemental Appropriations and Transfers. Whereas in 2020, annual appropriations that were adopted December 10th, 2019, are to be amended, and whereas appropriations must not exceed the total available resources of the village per Ohio Revised Code Section 5705 dot 36A5, therefore, an amended certificate of estimated resources has been requested from the County Budget Commission. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, Section 1. Since certain, certain actions are needed in the, in the monies appropriated so to permit Village Green Hills to meet its fiscal obligations for the year 2020, the following items of expenditures are to be, are to supplement the appropriations for expenditure in the year 2020. Fund description, Other Capital Projects Fund, account number 4901. Original appropriation, $336,282.12. Additional change, $62,382.67. New total, $399,664.79. Section 2, from the following transfers of fund to be made from previously appropriated monies, from none, no changes. Section 3, this resolution shall take effect and be in full force from and after the earliest date allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any comments?
Just as a point of clarification, this, these additional funds are monies received from the Water District for the work on the Winton Road Phase 3 project. So that's, that's, we're just having to account for those dollars, so.
All right, clerk call the roll.
Holter?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Holter?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Metz?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Okay, resolution number 2020-13-F passes. Next, Resolution number 2020-14-F, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Federal Funding from the CARES Act through the State of Ohio House Bill 481. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2020-14-F.
Do you want to do this in a round robin where we each take?
I can handle it. Resolution adopting and approving the federal funding from the CARES Act through the State of Ohio House Bill 481. Whereas the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, 116 Public Ball, 136, the CARES Act, was signed into law by the President of the United States on March 27th, 2020. And whereas the Ohio General Assembly established a process for distributing the funds provided by the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act in the House Bill 481, of the 133rd General Assembly, House Bill 481. And whereas House Bill 4481 requires subdivisions receiving funds under the Section 1 of the Act to pass a resolution affirming that funds from the County Coronavirus Relief Distribution Fund may be expended only to cover costs of the subdivision consistent with the requirements of Section 5001 of the CARES Act. Yes, that's Section 5001 of the CARES Act, as described in 42 U.S. Code 601D and any applicable regulations before receiving said funds. Whereas the Finance Director of the Village of Green Hills has recommended that a new fund be established to be known as Local Coronavirus Relief Fund, fund number to be determined by the Finance Director, to account for revenues and expenditures relating to coronavirus relief. And whereas the Village of Green Hills is requesting its share of funds from the County Coronavirus Relief Distribution Fund, now therefore be resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, that the Council affirms that all funds received from the County Coronavirus Distribution Fund pursuant to House Bill 481 be expended only to cover costs of the subdivision consistent with the requirements of Section 5001 of the CARES Act as described in 42 U.S. Code 601D and any applicable regulations and guidance only to cover the expenses that Section 1 are necessary expenditures incurred due to the public health emergency with respect to the coronavirus disease 2001, also known as COVID-19. Section 2, were not accounted for in the Village of Green Hills' most recently approved budget as of March 27th, 2020. And Section 3, were incurred during the period that began March 1st, 2020, and ends December 30th, 2020. Furthermore, in compliance with House Bill 481, be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, that the Village of Green Hills Finance Director take all necessary. necessary action to, Section 4, establish a new fund to be known as the Local Coronavirus Relief Fund, fund number to be determined by the Finance Director, to account for these revenues and expenditures relating to coronavirus relief. Section 5, on or before October 15th, 2020, pay any unencumbered balance of money in the Village of Green Hills Local Coronavirus Relief Fund to the County Treasurer. Section 6, on or before December 28th, 2020, pay the balance of any money in the Village of Green Hills Local Coronavirus Relief Fund to the State Treasury in the manner prescribed by the Director of the Ohio Office of Budget and Management, and Section 6, 7, Section 7, provide any information related to any payments received under House Bill 481 to the Director of Ohio Office of Budget and Management as requested. Section 8, that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon its adoption. Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt this resolution.
It's been moved and seconded, and I can't believe there'd be any comments on this that covered everything that you could imagine.
I'm surprised that the Finance Director hasn't come up with that number for the account. She'll get right on it, though, I'm sure.
We did find out today we're going to receive a little over $53,000.
Whoa.
So that was a pleasant surprise. So once the resolution is signed off, then I send that back down to the county father's office, and then we should have the money within a week or so.
Very good.
Thank you.
And of course, they're debating another giveaway program, so maybe we'll benefit from that, too. Okay, clerk, call the roll.
Ms.?
Aye.
Walter?
Aye.
Osmond?
Aye.
Paulson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Hermes? Aye.
Resolution number 2020-14-F passes. Municipal Calendar.
Laws and Rules, August 25th. Safety Committee, August 25th.
Hey. Isn't that...
Public hearing for the zoning. You want to do that? August 25th. Perfect.
And did, what was it?
The public hearing, the Council of Green Hills, August 25th.
Did we, backing up, did we want to do a motion to have Yvonne?
Yep, that's right, too.
Somebody make a motion to have Yvonne?
I move that the village manager would have a blanket power to cover us with the requirement that we all have to cover the sunshine law.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is that a voice vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes. Nothing else, meeting adjourned.